Oh, no. It's no fun.
I'm just spinning trying to record. Okay, Dr. Baldi.
Thank you. I'm calling our meeting to order. It's a special governing board meeting and a retreat study session. And this is October 26th, and it is now 4:03 in the afternoon. Roll call, please.
Trustee Young.
Present.
Trustee Gardner.
Present.
Trustee Fox.
Present.
Vice President Gross. I see he's here. Vice President Gross?
He's frozen.
Oh, he's frozen. Okay. President Ubaldi.
I am here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And may we please rise for the pledge of allegiance? If you're able, that is. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any public comment on the agenda items before us? Ms. Thomas?
No public comment today.
Okay, thank you. And now let us adopt the agenda. May I entertain a motion, please?
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay. They move by trustee Garner, and seconded by trustee Dr. Young. Roll call, please.
Trustee Young. Trustee Gardner.
Aye.
Trustee Fox.
Aye.
Vice President Gross.
Aye.
And President Ubaldi.
Aye. Okay, we're now item three, and this is the actual study information item that we will be doing study right now on the governance core. And I'd like to ask Deborah to, let me go to the superintendent first and see if he may have some directions for us and guidance for us. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Ubaldi. Just wanted to welcome Deborah Keys Wright back to Virtual Vallejo with us again. And I think this represents the last couple of workshops that we started on earlier in the year. And I know everybody's been doing their homework, and it was fun to get back into those chapters again on the governance core. I'm looking forward to it, and it's gonna be so much fun tonight. We're gonna do it tomorrow night. So with that, Deborah, if you could start us off.
All right, all right. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Well, I was hoping to see you in person, but I couldn't see you. Now, that's okay. I'm so thankful that you guys are coming back completing this book. I hope you really enjoy these last few chapters because the first three, of course, was preparing us for the work that we're going to do. We're together for four hours tonight. How about that? It's gonna go by fast. We will have a break. Two breaks in there, actually, and then you're going to be in a workout session, which is gonna be a little bit more relaxed, and we're gonna add like a five-minute break just to the end of that one as well. And so pretty much, we're going to have an overview of, just a high overview of the first three chapters, and then we're going to really dive into talking about chapters five and six tonight, and seven, and some of eight, which I didn't say you had to read it, but if you kind of just kind of went through, it's just about tools, governance tools. I'm just gonna do a high level of the eight and nine, which is something that you're already familiar with based upon previous training that I've done with you. So are you, so how is everyone doing, first of all? Do a kind of a check-in. How's everyone? Good? All right.
Deborah, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, because I'm having some kind of problems here, but okay, as long as you can hear me.
You froze earlier, Tony.
Yeah, I think you're okay now.
Okay.
Okay, thank.
Now Deborah's frozen.
You can. Unity of Purpose is what's really going to help center us. I always like to have us, because a lot has occurred since the last time we've been gathered, you have board meetings, and just life, you know? So just kind of re-center us on the governance core and what it looks like. I mean, we could read all of this, this whole book, but we have to make sure that we actually utilize the tools that are in there when you're at the board table, and when you're engaging with each other, when you are in your work sessions, trying to understand the work or whatever the information that the staff has given you to help you get prepared to make a decision when you're handling business. But tonight is just your professional learning opportunity. No decisions are being made, of course. It's just focusing on, you know, strengthening your skill set and getting, putting more tools in your governance toolbox so that you can work collaboratively collectively together with each other and your superintendent as the governance team. And so you can see the headings that we're going to go over. So Ken, would you kind of show the next slide, please? And click it one more time, because it's a unity of purpose. So our vision is of a governance system, school board, and superintendent working together as a cohesive unifying team with a common vision driven by a shared moral imperative. Now, each of you, just when you read, when you listen to that statement and you see this, and you see how the hands are together, and some of the words, respect, welcome, regard, unite, relationship, all of that, what are your thoughts? You know, what we've learned, we've talked about unity of purpose before. So what are your thoughts about this to help center us? Just jump in, anyone?
Okay.
Relationship?
Say that again, Dr. Ubaldi?
Relationship?
With, yeah. And what about relationships, though?
That diverse relationship, it's various levels, coming from left and right, top and bottom. And the core of it is really, it's really where you create the results.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I don't.
Oh, Christie, go ahead.
Okay, I don't see where we would be going if we didn't have unity of purpose. I mean, if we weren't all moving in the same direction, we would get nowhere. And I think that, and that doesn't mean that we all have the same, the same thoughts, or the same ideas, or the same goals. Well, we do have the same goal, but we have a unity of, we're all in this for the same reason. And I think that's extremely important. And if we're, if we didn't have that same reason for the kids, basically, I don't think that we would be very successful. We would get nowhere.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing.
Deborah, I wanted, somebody playing Kill the Joe, I heard that, but anyhow, I wanted to thank you and, and, or specifically you, for enlightening me to this book, because I wouldn't have read it unless you, unless you had made me do it. And, 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 you know, I was, well, but I think when we see the hands like that, it's that unification shows how necessary it is for board, for the board and the superintendent to work together. And it's really about that, that shared moral imperative. And I think it's really important as a group of six of us that we have that in common. Because what I did see in the book, and I had talked to a board member about this, is how if we're, if we're gonna move this district forward in any kind of capacity, we have to have a unification on that shared moral imperative, and it has to be driven by us, and it has to be driven completely through the district. So, and I think the book has given us tools and ideas on how to do that. Now, the work of it is another, another thing, but I mean, I just really appreciate that. Like I said, the unification is where we, what we're trying to get to.
Absolutely, absolutely. Dr. Young?
You know, from my history observing the district, this is the first time that I've ever seen a board more, more on track as what they want for a district. And I'm very proud of my team members on this board because we all have a common vision that drives us, and that's the children that we serve in this community. So the unity of purpose to me is being built. I see it being built because I have, I've had the opportunity to watch other boards and how dysfunctional they are. But I don't see this board as going in that pathway because we all have a general understanding of which direction we want this district to go in. So that's why working together and collaborating and having the same mindset, the moral imperative, is very important. And I think all of that is fixed in each one of our minds as we go about doing business for Vallejo City Unified School District.
Powerful. Thank you. Absolutely, absolutely. John or Superintendent, John, go ahead. I see your hand was.
Go ahead, John. Similar to Dr. Young's, this board, the Vallejo City, the citizens of Vallejo have seen, actually, this November, December, it'll be three years that they've seen a difference. Before that three years, the board was basically the laughingstock of California. And even when we hired Bill, Bill was even, the superintendents we hired were like, oh, this board used to be very dysfunctional, and we all heard about this board. So we're just going on three years of people that actually work together, and like Christie said, have a common, have common goals, and that we all are unified going in the same direction. There's no special, well, there might be a few little special agendas, but overall, I would say ninety-some percent, most of us are for all the children, and we don't have special agendas. And we're trying to, and I think we'll weed out a few of those maybe tonight, if we are concerned about that. But we're going in the right direction, as we're saying, the ship is sailing in the right direction. So this, like I said, the community and everyone in Vallejo has seen almost three years of a board that works together, which is very refreshing. And some people in the community gave us the term of the dream board because our city council is very dysfunctional. Well, I don't want to say city council. The process of people are not working together, they're not dysfunctional people.
Right.
They're not working together as a system with the manager and all the components in the city. But the school district is where it used to be the opposite.
Right. Thank you for, for that. You're absolutely, though, the ingredients, you know, anytime you see dysfunction is usually because whatever group, they don't know what they're supposed to do. And they, they need guidance. I always like to start out believing that everyone's there for the right reason. Yes, there are agendas, but my thing is, does your agenda equate to student outcomes for you guys? Does it equate to creating the best education journey possible for your students? If so, then that agenda's fine, you know, but working collaboratively. So Superintendent, what about you?
You know, I guess I could really echo what a lot of the board members are saying. I was thinking, as trustee Gardner was talking about the unity of purpose, and she said, you know, really, without that, that shared moral imperative, you know, what, I mean, who gets anywhere? You know, how, how does anyone go forward? And I was thinking to myself, I've seen other boards, and I've seen other boards that lack a shared moral imperative. Or I've seen other management, governance teams, the board and the superintendent, where they lack that shared vision or that shared moral imperative, and they don't go very far. You know, I've witnessed it myself. And so tonight, I'm, I'm really proud, you know, and really pleased to be working with this board, and just, I can really echo a lot of what's been said. And it's, I'm coming up now, hard to believe, on my one-year anniversary of working with this board. You know, in some ways, it's been a long year because of COVID, but in some ways, it's gone by very quickly as well. But, you know, I, like I said, I would echo what people have to say, how important it is to have, you know, kind of that shared moral imperative. And then people do pay attention, kind of going to what trustee Fox says. People do pay attention, and I've been in other communities where the, where the board has, has been strong and other governance agencies not as much, and where people make those inevitable comparisons and have, and because of that, will have a lot more trust in a functioning governance organization than they do in an organization that doesn't seem to be functioning very well. And, and those meetings are very different.
Right.
You'll see people kind of treat, treat a governing agency that doesn't seem to have its act together like a group of people doesn't have, seem to have their act together. So I think that's another thing that, that really benefits us, that I think we're treated with a great deal of respect because it's earned.
Absolutely. And I've been fortunate enough to work with you several years, and I can see the growth. And so very pleased, pleased of that, because like I said, I always begin being able to share with board members what you can do. Not give you a litany of a whole thing of what you can't do, you can't do this. It's what you can do because there's so much, and so much important work to do. The key thing is just finding out how do we operate in the parameters that the system is already created. No individual can come and say, we're changing this whole democratic process because this is the way we want to govern. Well, no, you don't have the authority to do that. Governance is governance. And it can be, it is very effective when you understand the role you play. And with you guys, with the superintendent and with the board, there's a reason why those are those two lanes, as I always say to you, going in the same direction, because you need each other. You feed off each other. You can't have one without the other. And, and the children are the ones who are benefiting this. And so you're absolutely right. Everyone's comments, you're, you're right on target. And Superintendent, when you were mentioning about the way, if community people come to your meetings or any other groups meeting, and they see dysfunction, that's how they will engage with you as well. And then, you know, so whatever, whoever the group is, it's gonna be very tough for them to get control of that meeting. Because they, you know, I always say be professional. You guys especially have to really be careful because your students are watching. So what are you modeling? So how are you going to be in a position making major decisions for your scholars? And then they look at your behavior. And, and, and it's just like when we have our own family members, you know, our children. We tell them not to do certain things, and then they may look at us. Once they get older, they start questioning, well, wait a minute. You know, and so we want to model, and you guys certainly have been modeling good governance. No one ever gets to the point where you check the box and say, we have arrived. It's continuous improvement, continuous learning, because the business of the district is gonna still be going. You guys will have obstacles thrown in your way that will try to throw you off-center. But once you keep your eye focused on what governance is and what we are to do, and what we are not to, you know, what we are to support the superintendent and staff in doing, that makes a big difference. You know, I continue to say to board teams that when COVID hit everyone in the country, and we're specifically talking about how it impacted districts, your role as a governing body did not change. It did not change. A lot of boards were kind of thrown off and just couldn't do anything else because they were just trying to make the decisions, if you will, about, you know, closing schools and whatever we're gonna do. The key thing is, this is where you should be very glad that you're not the superintendent because the education expert and their staff are the ones who had to figure out the plan. Not that you guys didn't engage with them, but they are the experts. So they, you have to trust that they know what's best to educate children, whether it's remotely or whether it's, we have to move them from this location to over here because this building was on fire. Whatever the situation is, you have to trust that who you hired to be the expert has expert be in the whole area of where you hire them to, you know, to represent. And so keeping that in mind, because it was COVID, it's going to be something else that's gonna distract you and that will try to. So that's why you should focus on priorities and not hot topics. Because the hot topics are the day-to-day things that, you know, your community members will want to pull your coattail to talk to you about, and that's okay. You can engage, but then you pass it on to the superintendent. So just remembering that. And the whole thing of getting to unity of purpose, you individually have to say, what is my why? Why am I doing this work? And once you can identify that, then that's how the, the team will gel together. And so absolutely, thank you for sharing your comments because you are right on target there. All right, Ken, next slide, please. So we're going to just kind of think about having unity of purpose. What does this mean? Is why is it important to serve as a part of a governance team? These are questions, you know, that just kind of think about, you know, having the mindset, you should engage, kind of ponder on these questions. And the next one, who are we? What is our purpose? To whom are we responsible? Okay? What do we value and believe about the work of school boards and just public education as a whole that's gonna serve students? Okay? What are we most proud of of our organization? There are so many negative things happening. You have to be able to tell your story. There are things that you, yes, there are things that, you know, really wear on you and challenge you, but there are some things that you're proud of, too, that you have to be able to share with your community. Okay? As a governing board, what do we want to accomplish? What, what are we going to do? You guys, like John, you mentioned you're this new team, the dream team. What is the dream team going to accomplish? You know, and so you should have some ideas of what it is you're trying to accomplish, and make sure that it's measurable, that it is attainable, that you could do it, so that you can celebrate at the end. How do we prioritize our resources to support these efforts? When you think about what you want to do, connecting with prioritizing your, your goals and all of that, do you have the resources to support it? This is what a unity purposeful mindset is like. When you're saying you have unity of purpose, this is what it looks like. Okay? The next one. What do we as a governing body, what do you stand for? And so if someone's on the outside looking in or looking at your agenda, can they tell that you're focused on student outcomes? And you may think that that's what you're doing, but can someone on the outside be able to tell? Or do you have to really explain it away of what you're trying to do, that they don't see any evidence? Okay? And how do we wish to be perceived by our community, which is key because they are your stakeholders, they're your partners. They are sending their jewels, their children to the, to your district to be educated. And so how do you want to be perceived by them? They elected you to represent the needs of the community. And so that's what they expect of you. You just have to be very clear and making sure you're helping them understand the parameters in which you operate. Okay? What legacy do our governance team leave? Want, you know, team to leave, want to leave, it should be. What is, what's gonna be the legacy of this dream team? And so there, there's, there should be some things that you know, that you, some projects, initiatives, some goals that you have sought out to accomplish. So are you measuring those? Are you keeping track of those? To be able to share your story, to know what your legacy is going to be. What are you gonna leave? When we have difficult decisions to make, how will we be mindful of our shared principles and belief? That's where your challenge, when, when, when it's tough decisions, sometimes we end up throwing everything that we've learned out the window. But this is where your board norms should come into play, your agreements with each other, your professionalism on how you're going to engage. No, you don't have to agree. You're all individuals, you have six different personalities, and maybe sometimes we have two, you know, when we show up. You know, you don't know which one's there. But just know that you are selected to share your lived experience, your education background. But then you engage with each other because no one is the expert on any particular thing. You kind of play off each other. Someone may, one may have a lot more information, a different lived experience, but all of that information kind of goes on the table so that you can collectively make your informed decisions. So that's what it looks like. So consider these important questions when, when you're talking about unity of purpose. And it's kind of a gauge. It could be another tool to just make sure. It's almost like when you're, you're saying you're really good, I'm really good at this, and says, who? Who told you you were good? What's your evidence? So if you can pass this, is it measurable? You know, this will be a little, an assessment type that you could kind of just, you know, check in with yourself on that and as the team, as a reminder. Okay? Next slide.
Deborah, question on that.
Say that again?
Could you hear, no, I said, I said, Deborah, question on, I want to go back, back to those, those ten, ten statements.
Yes, sir.
Now, as, as you were going through them, when I look at that, for, for me, to answer those, I don't know how to, to answer those properly, I would have to know that my other four trustees, we would all have the same answer. You see what I'm saying? And, and, and to get to, to get to that point, we would be that, that board that, that understands what, what all those governance principles mean. We understand our norms, we have our protocols. I'm of the belief that, that that's not, that's not a hundred percent comprehensible right now. You know, so, so I guess my question is, we, we need to work on things like the norms, the protocol, that, what are those principles? You know, why is it important to serve as a governance team? You know, I, I guess I'm saying, these questions are great, and I think these are the things that I want to see us kind of attack so we can get to that place to where we're insulated because we have a real governance mindset. And, and, you know, to say it, and like I said, going back to the book, to see it written and to, and to live it are two different things.
Absolutely, absolutely. And thank you for sharing. You're, you're right on it, and going back to what I said. No, you're not gonna get to a point where you've arrived. This, this is always something that you, you can see, are, do we pass this test? Are we there? And we need to continue to work, and you can identify what areas do we need to work on? Why do we always bump heads when it comes to this? You know, help me understand. So it may need to be a different conversation with your colleague, absolutely, to see, okay, I know we don't see eye to eye on here, but there could be just something missing there. But this is something you work toward, you're constantly striving, but it is really seeing, are we, are we measuring up? Are we working at this? It's definitely a work in process. So you're absolutely right. Each board member needs to talk about it. And at some point, you, two of you guys can be engaging conversations about this just to kind of have a check-in to see where we are, because you're going to need a solid foundation on governance, understanding and having this mindset to really help you when other challenges are thrown your way. When, you know, what's happening all over the country with board members and board meetings being disrupted, you know, based upon one item on the agenda, if you will. How is the board responding? Are you getting pulled into that because you don't have a solid foundation? So, you know, it goes to when I would share with, with teams that we can talk about, you can talk about equity, we can talk about all these different, we can talk about a strategic plan, all of these things. But if you don't have a solid understanding of your, what board governance truly is, you will be sidetracked easily, or you will end up going down the lane of the administrators. That's not where, you know, you have knowledge of it, but that's not for you to do. You are to say, this is what we need. You are not the individuals who implement the work. And, and it gets, it's really tough when you do know how to implement it. But in this role, that's not, not your job to do it. And you just have to, again, make sure all of the, all of the, everything, parameters, everything's in place and support of the superintendent and his staff to get the work done. everything's in place and support of the superintendent and his staff to get the work done. And then you, you know, accountability. And, and so absolutely, so thank you for bringing that up. Um, Dr. Young, yes, you had your hand up.
Um, even when we have a purpose and mindset, and we're all coherent about delivering that, that mindset to the public, we also need to understand that there's a margin of error there. People are going to interpret it the way they want to interpret it. So it's very important for us to keep consistently report, we, um, verbalizing what we as a mindset. But people have a tendency to hear what they want to hear and not focusing on what they really hear.
Right, right. And, and, and you're right, that that's an issue, uh, which could be a challenge for any group that's working together. Um, is, well, someone can say, well, that's my interpretation. Well,
Interpretation, yeah, yeah.
You know, let, look, we have to still start peeling away, wh- where's the evidence? Where's the data, quantitative, qualitative data, whatever, supporting this? Whatever your feeling it is. And that's how you have to get around, because we don't ever want to get to a point where we're digging our heels in the fan and say, well, that's how I feel about it, because that's what, you know? But the, what does that have to do with this? When the evidence is showing us, the data is showing us that we need to do X, Y, Z. At some point, and I said this before, it's not about how we feel. It's about, is that emotional intelligence that we must have? You have to get, you know, make that, um, that journey from the heart up to the head, where you're making concrete decisions, not based on emotions. We are human beings, yes, we are emotional. So we can be in that space for a little while and engage in dialogue with our colleagues to get, trying to get a better understanding. At the end of the day, this is where the decisions are made from. Not, I just feel this, I have a gut feeling. Unless you're gut feeling, all of that, if, if you looked at all of your data and you have all the information that you need to make your informed decision, if you call that your gut feeling, that's fine. But we don't ever want to not do our homework, listen to the experts, um, look into consider, you know, taking consideration what's happening in your district, not just what's happening everyone else, everywhere else, but what's happening here, what we are able to do. So there are just certain ways to look at it from every angle. And when you feel you have exhausted that, then that's how you, you respond. But it takes time to get there. And so we don't ever want to, to say, well, that's how I feel about it, and throw your hands up. That's just, that's a disservice to sitting in that seat. You know, and, and this team is too intelligent to do that. And, and so I know you're very capable, and I know you have spirited conversations, and that's what you should do, but respecting and understanding, but making sure every individual is not making it that this is just the way I see it, and that's the way it is. Because that's the same as if someone sees research and the data in front of them, but they don't like it. It's pretty much, okay, I'm sorry you don't like it, but just because you don't like it, doesn't mean that it's not true. And that's what we have to remember. Yes, Dr. Young?
Um, will our strategic plan, when it's put in place, give us a focus of guidance?
It better? Isn't that right, superintendent?
I see all this, this that we're reading in this book. It always has to have a, a, a engine to guide it. It has to have an engine. You can't just put, and all of this behind it goes along with the train. So I think we'll, in the unity and the purpose of it, we will begin to see, um, what we're about.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, where are you guys in your strategic plan process?
We've got,
Engine, the little, the little, the little story, you know, I'm elementary, so the engine that could.
That could.
We're going up the hill. We're, we're getting together our strategic plan advisory committee. We've pretty much selected everybody. And now we're coming up with dates, and that's, that's going to be a little bit of a challenge, because we've got two facilitators who are, who are pretty famous and doing a lot of work in a lot of places. So I'm anticipating that we'll probably get those dates scheduled here in the next couple of weeks. But they'll, we'll probably be starting in earnest in December and finishing in February. But, um, this definitely, it's definitely coming together, you know, in terms of the format.
And that's good. And I, I'm glad that you guys are picking up, which, you know, we're, we're, this is how I like to know. I, I, this is where it shows me that you're really into this book, because you're pulling out things and you're making the connection. And then you're right, your, your strategic plan is your blueprint. I mean, and, and Dr. Young, you were talking about the, um, uh, renovation that you're having. If you didn't have a solid foundation, you know, if we're in there ripping things out, if there wasn't a foundation, um, or if they'd have the blueprint to lay out, or they just thought, I'm going to put this here, I'm going to put this there, you as the owner would not want, i- i- it doesn't fit your needs. And so, and they don't want to figure it out. No district can operate that way. Um, and so I'm glad that you're in the process of getting it, but, and the key thing is, it's not that the educator's hand helps me clear a strategic plan, and you have your L, L cap as well, but the board then can hold the superintendent accountable, because your goals are in there. And so it just, it's, it's good to have, it is, I think it's not just good, it's necessary to have, because that's how the board can be, um, um, effective in, in, um, ensuring that the work is being done. And it doesn't have to get into the space of saying, again, this is how I feel about it, or I think this should be done. Well, what are the goals? And, and everything that's a, a, you know, attached to the goals? And, and so that's in the strategic plan, so absolutely, absolutely. And so, um, yeah, we'll go on, and anybody you could, guys can jump in, um, as you want. And so we're just going to do a quick overview of what, just quickly too, I mean, really quick. So go ahead, Ken. I'm just going to always kind of just keep clicking through that one, so everything comes up. Remembering your communication style. Again, I don't want you to forget what we've talked about, and you have this information. So just remembering, because when you have the, have conversations that are, that test you, just remember the styles that we talked about. The, the next one, I think there's one more, so, yeah. Um, and then adapting is always good. If you really want to be collaborative team, just, it's okay for someone, for you to adapt. It's not about getting my way, okay? So just remember your communication style. And re- and this is how you're going to remember, because I'm going to show you what it are. Go ahead, Ken. Just remembering on this spool, on the left, and then two on the right. And so usually where there could be, um, some, um, spirited conversations are usually if you're across from someone. So we see the crossing, you see the analyzer and the promoter, you see the doer and the supporter. Uh, and so, once you know that, just work even harder on trying to make sure that you allow each other space, so that the message is not lost. Okay? Next slide. And then quickly, you know, what you, the analyzer, you're interested in communicating are the facts and the data. Okay, facts and data. The doer is to get things done. You got the motivator, working with people to get things done. And the promoter, communicating is fun and people just having fun, you know, promoting, being that cheerleader, right, Mr. Gross? And, uh, but wanting to do so many things. And then your, your superintendent, a supporter, um, communicating our relationships and avoiding conflicts. We'll deal with conflicts if you need to, but really want to, if you build good relationships, the chances of having conflicts diminish. Next slide. And kind of click through. And just as a reminder to each of you guys, we broke into small groups. We talked about systems thinking, right? And, um, strategic focus and systems thinking, an innovative approach to education, seeking, uh, radical changes. That's what systems thinking is. Um, it can be a means of creating systemic change to restructure education systems into something more effective. Okay, strategic focus, we know that governance is a strategic job. Effective governance teams operate from strategic content rather than a tactical or administrative content. Remember that fifty thousand, thirty thousand, ten thousand foot view? That deep learning, um, governance requires deep understanding of the issues and goals of the district. So you, you have to make decisions based on your knowledge level. So doing your homework is crucial. And it's not that you, you have to be an expert at all the information that is given to you, but do your research, read the packets, all of that stuff that you guys are doing. And then we talked about manner as a team, and that's just rules of civility. Um, w- we discussed the non-verbal language, um, that takes place at the diet, and what are you saying without uttering a word? A- and again, your community can see this too. And so as always, if we're talking about having a, a governance mindset, we need to really pay attention to the, uh, and understand the basic principles of governance. And you would think these are so simple, everyone knows it, but if you see dysfunctional boards, I can tell you that these are absent. No one's paying attention to this. Um, next slide. Oh, keep going. Keeping the board's function, you know, focused on children. That's what it's about, the children, of course, being good stewards of the budget. Um, long-term goals, it's not about, you know, the short game all the time. The superintendent pays attention to that. There are some immediate things that the superintendent and his staff need to take care. Board needs to have, uh, be, you know, long-term thinking. If we make a move here, how is it going to impact us two, three years? Big strategic thinking, um, as a board. And then you supporting, um, building and maintaining your strong governance, um, infrastructure, which you continue to do, supporting the staff, um, creating a positive organizational culture. It starts at the board level. Um, you guys are really are modeling this well. Would always want to, and I will always remember, anyone who does not know you, they may watch your board meetings or other board, and in other boards, um, when they have their meeting, and they think, oh, people are so nice, and they're so kind, they're cordial. That looks good until the camera goes off, you know? And then that's when it all happens. And so we have to, because that will end up showing up at the board table eventually. So you always want to make sure that it's not about being just cordial, absolutely civility, which a lot of that is not present in, in, um, where board meetings, um, the last year and a half or two ago, and, and, and it could get worse before it gets better. Um, and then holding the organization accountable to the, to the community is served. Accountability is what the board is responsible of making sure. And of course, you can do that when you have a strategic plan in place. Everybody knows what they're supposed to do. So when there is accountability, your staff person is the superintendent, and he has to make sure that, he has to hold all of his staff accountable, because whatever happens bel- you know, in his area, he is going to be held accountable through you guys. But it's not for, of course, the, the governing team to instruct the superintendent how to handle his or staff. You know, his, I'm saying with your superintendent, with his staff. Um, is, do we have these things in place so that this doesn't happen again? Remember those questions with a purpose. Um, do we have evaluations, um, in, in place for all staff? Do all of our staff understand this, this, this? That's how you engage with the superintendent. You have one staff person and one, one of the most important staff individuals in the district, because so goes this leadership team, so goes the rest of the, the, um, school system. So I just always want to remind board members individually, always do a self-check. Am, am I kind of getting in a space that I'm not supposed to be in? Not saying that there's any malice intent, but sometimes we have to just remind ourselves. It's almost, you know, oh, I, that's right, I don't, I don't have to do this, because we have a superintendent that we've given clear instructions of what we expect of him. We've given him clear instructions on, you are to hire your staff, and they are just to make sure that this, this, this is being done, because the board is monitoring that, the outcomes of those. And so sometimes we get a little relaxed, because of course you are a part of the community, you're friends with the community, and then just because you're on the board, that doesn't mean they're going to stop talking to you, and they shouldn't. And you shouldn't stop talking to them. What you do have to do, because you are on the board, you just have to remember the position that you have. Um, the position is very powerful. Um, but you don't ever want to confuse the community on the areas that you have authority in. Um, and I always say, board members can ask any questions they want to. Hard stop. Now, I'm going to ask you, the board members, why are you asking the question? Does it have something to do with preparing you to be able to make an informed decision? Is it something that other, you and your colleagues have been talking about? You want to know that, absolutely. So again, taking ownership, and I always say, if every individual board member kind of monitor, first, that the whole, that your superintendent will reap the benefits. Um, and the staff, and then the kids, who are our, our focus, okay? And keeping the constituents of the organization informed, not today, that's the role of the board, of course. So this, all of these things that we've gone over is about, yeah, you go ahead, is about if you're saying you want a mind, a, a governance mindset. And we talked quickly about, you know, the type of style of your superintendent, the hands-off or the, um, what's the next one? Preemptive damage control and the purposeful approach. We know that your superintendent is definitely the purposeful approach, but we went through list, you know, kind of talking about what it looks like when they're not in that space. And you guys were very quickly able to, um, identify when, um, you know, you weren't in that space. Uh, i- if a superintendent would move over in, you know, the hands-off, you know, why would, but some superintendents may feel they have to, because they just don't want to deal with the board. That's not ever a good move. Uh, preemptive damage control, you know, you must engage with the board, keeping them informed. Um, and the worst thing is to, to ignore Board of Education. You just don't do that, Perry. So here we are today, we talked about, in chapter five, when it really was talking about, um, a, a joint mindset. Go ahead, Ken, yes. You know, we talked about with the curriculum instruction, management, administration, and, and governance as a whole. Now, uh, not yet, yeah, stay right there. So tell me, before we, I'm, I'm going to pull us back in a minute. Um, a joint mindset, what, what did you pick up? It was very specific about identifying what that is and what it is not. Uh, what, what did you, what did you pick up in the, in the book, on, on, on that specific, um, area? About what it is and what it is not? Anybody? What is it? We're about on page eighty-seven in that area. That's beginning of five. What is, um, a joint mindset? Because it specifically talked about curriculum instruction, management, um, that coherence, um, governing with coherence.
I, I think it's that shared moral imperative and the unity of purpose.
Yeah, we can hear you, go, go ahead, Kristi.
No, I just think that it boils down to the shared moral imperative and you, and unified purpose, unity of purpose. Um, you know, you can have different opinions, but you have basically a common mindset with all of your members, because of the moral imperative and because of the unity of purpose.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. What was it saying about the mindset at first of how the current coherent mindset is in the systems today? Did you pick that, pick up on that?
Well, it talked about the, the unified board, and then also, what was that other word that it used? Um, oh, uniform, uniform and unified. Um, so you can be unified without being uniform. Not everybody is the same, and we're not all in lockstep, but we can be, um, we can be u- unified in, in moving forward.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, Dr. Young, and then Mr. Gross. Thank you, Kristi.
Um, I kind of piggyback on what, um, Kristi was saying. We, we can be, um, we can be unified, um, because we've come with different beliefs and styles and personality that work together. But we have a shared, you know, we have a shared moral imperative in a collective corporation in order to get this done. So it's not a we, it's not a I, 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 it's a collaborative we, we, we in order to keep that train moving.
Right, and they talked about uniform, we kind of, and, or unified. So what are you?
It's something that stays the same.
So you're unified, right?
I really, we like to unify as, as, as something that you, uh, I really, we like to uniform as, as, as something that you um, it's a stationary thing, it's, it's a cut thing. Uniform, you have uniforms for the military, you have uniforms or, so that never changes.
Right. So you're a unified board, because you're all individuals, right?
Yeah.
So like with your different beliefs and style, but you learn that's, this is what coherence, this is where we're coming together with what governing with coherence actually looks like. So Mr. Gross, what were, what say you? And then John, that to you and, and Mr. Uvalde.
Sometimes, sometime my screen gets frozen here, but anyhow, I was looking at this and this is got, it kind of goes back to that whole governance mindset thing that, that to have, to have governance mindset would, would be, would be to put all three of these systems together so, so they work dependent on each, so they, they become dependent upon each other. And so, and, and that's, you know, because what, what we do as, as board members, we, we don't, you know, get into detail in any of them, but our, but our governance rule is the thing that allows them to, 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 to produce.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Right. And, and, and usually, if you look at the diagram on, on page ninety, is usually we have um the curriculum and instruction, management and administration, and the governance team is nowhere near, right?
Right.
But in order to have um the mindset of uh required coherence mindset system, that's where it shows all three of them crossing into each other. And that's what the, you know, the, your superintendent is representing those other two areas. And then the, so he can't operate over here by himself. And then the board is over here, that's why he's crossing over. Um, that, that's why you guys have an understanding of the what, or that's why you're able to say, this is the what we want you to do. Um.
But he tried, he, he tries to, how, how do I say? He tried, he, he translates the job of curriculum and, and instruction and management to the governing board so we can, so we are able to comprehend that. Now, my, my, my question or issue is that, that, that there are times that I feel that the board needs to have more, more opportunity to discuss things. And, and you know, and, and, and I know it has to be, I know I can't do it the way, I, I tell Bill, I want to do it, the couple of people can't do it, Brown Act and so forth. I know it has to be real, real official, but, but that discussion is, to me, is real paramount in the getting that, that whole unity in the governance, because, you know, there's issues sometime in curriculum and instruction where people will, will, will have questions about it. And it may, I, I don't want to see it, it may look as an attack or it may, you know, it, it, the perception of it could change, because the, the, the knowledge level isn't the same. And I think by having, by having preempted discussions on these things, it can kind of help mitigate those kind of issues. That's all.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And this is where the board has to be very clear on the what. What do you need to know? And, and so that your superintendent can make sure that his staff is prepared and giving you all of the information you need to be able to make an informed decision. Uh, because if you think about, you know, yes, there's always a desire, you need to be able to talk through some things. But I also caution the board, are you talking through it? And I'm doing this, reminding you of this governance clock. Are you talking through it and starting to go below that dotted line? Because you just want to know. You, you, the conversations, of course, during a board meeting should stay at the governance level. But if you, if you have work sessions and all that, that's where you can engage and, and really understand more uh of the information. And they're open to the community, so they can get a better understanding. But by the time you get to the board table, there probably should be just some clarifying questions. There should be no need to take the staff through the wringer again and sharing everything that they did, you know? Um, and, and work session, the work session is just what it's called, work session or study session. So that's absolutely where all of your questions. But instead of making it a blank slate where it tells the superintendent, we're gonna talk about this and we want your staff to be prepared. The board should be very clear on what is it that you need to know? And, and based upon, you know, what I, how I was sharing with you before, how you look at data. Where were we? Where are we now? Where are we trying to get to? So what do I need to know? How can I make a decision if we are doing such a phenomenal job? How would I know if I don't know where we started? So just the board being very clear, letting the superintendent know what, what it is that the board needs to know. And, and as again, I'm always gonna go back to board members to say, what kind of questions are you asking? Are you asking questions that, that align with implementation? Because you don't need to do that. If you have made the big picture, drawn the big picture of what you expect, the superintendent and his staff are the ones to implement, to show how to do it. So it's just remembering that. But you can kind of add some things to that, that they might, oh, you know what, we never thought about that. But that's that collaborative relationship. That's you guys respecting their knowledge, that they are experts in what they're doing, and that you have some expertise, but in this position, they are the implementers. They are the one, and so it's just a matter of, of respecting each other's role in that regard. But absolutely, if you have additional information that perhaps they didn't consider, absolutely, you can engage. But it's just where I want to always caution boards, just always kind of check the, the, the meter on our, am I going below that line, if you will, as far as, am I trying to tell them how to do it? Because I know, well, that's not in this position, that's not for you to do, of course. So how do you deliver information because you do know? That's a different kind of conversation. It could be, have you considered this, this, this superintendent? Or again, if you are very clear on what your expectations are, your knowledge base is in that request of your superintendent. Your knowledge base is in the what, because you, you thought through it. So just kind of thinking about it that way, because we don't ever want um staff to feel that, that they're not valued, that the board is going to critique every single thing they do. But we have to respect that they are, they were hired to do the job, and we're gonna trust that they are doing it until the superintendent tells us that they are no longer doing it. That, that's the way it goes. You wouldn't want to use your energy trying to figure out if they are, that's not. You use all of your energy ensuring that your superintendent is doing his job. Go ahead, John.
Um, yes, I have two, well, a few. The first one, we don't get to hear the conversations. So we each meet individually or by two, since there's five of us, one of us doesn't even get a two. So we meet with Bill prior to the agenda with all of our questions, concerns, and we get to talk out and have great conversations with Bill, one-on-one. But I don't get to hear Christie's concerns or Latonya's or, or Uvalde's or Gross, I don't get to hear those. So I have no idea what their thinking is for the consent items, for resolutions, for anything. So I'm going in cold with just what I talked with Bill about um the agenda and going forward. So I don't get to hear those discussions. I don't know the train of thinking, I don't know the concerns. Um, I don't know the issues other people have. Because when we take care of it prior to the, the meeting, then at the meeting, it's just um, all in favor for the consent items, roll call, yes, 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 yes. We don't hear any discussion. There's no dialogue, because we've already done the dialogue, one-on-one with Bill. And I know we can't do three, because the Brown Act. So it's very confining to have the conversations or to know what our fellow board members are or not thinking, or what issues they have or don't have. I have no idea.
Yeah, and before I just, John, you're, you're spot on there. And what I want to say to you guys, I've talked to you.
And I'm not done.
You just have to remind me, do you have study sessions?
Occasionally, when we need it, yes.
Okay. And, because you're, you're talking about what's on the agenda and all, and if it's ready for vote, because you don't want to violate anything. But if there's, there are items that you need more discussion about, those are the items that, and it's not time-sensitive, and you have to look at so many variables on it. And it's not time-sensitive. Utilize that, whatever that topic is, into a study session so that you can hear from your colleagues. You're not making any decisions, but you can hear a, a, and, and be better prepared um when, when it does come to the business meeting. Uh, but you, you guys, you control that. You, you have to allow time, because you're right. If one or two, you're having a robust discussion, you're not getting on the phone calling in it, everyone, because you got to be careful with, with that as well. And so just kind of think about, I mean, the, the structure that you have when you guys are meeting, that's where agenda items and things of that nature. But before they get to the agenda, do you have time to have good discussion about it? You know, and that's what you have to kind of think about, do we need additional? And you pull, you know, the board president, pull the board, do you need additional discussion about this item? And you have time. You know, then you can, you know, then you can have staff do their presentation or have more in-depth discussion, because that's all it is, you're not making any decision. But you do have to set aside time to, if, if there's a, a big ticket item, if you will, that you really need to hear from your other um colleagues. And sometimes it does have to take place at the board meeting, because it's time-sensitive. Uh, and you have to engage at that, that time. But it, it all goes back to, are you allowing yourself ample time to have discussion about items before they get to the agenda? To make sure that everyone is comfortable. And if the answer is no, then it's just a matter of engaging your, uh, with Dr. Uvalde as the president of, what can we do if we know this item is going to be a very intense conversation, but we need more information? Why not schedule a study session on that? And, and get more information so that you feel, because the key thing is, everyone wants to be as, as well-informed to make the best decision, you know?
I agree with you um somewhat. But, but the part that I'm having difficulty is, and I'm not talking, we're fine with study sessions, if one of us caller, we need information, I know we'll get that. I, I have no concern about that. What my point is though, is I would still like to know what was discussed or what was brought up for the, each agenda with, from the other board members that discussed it with Bill. Just because then it gives me an overall view of maybe things I didn't think of, or maybe it's the same points I'm stuck on. So I just, I don't know. I know another superintendent used to write down some of the questions that board members asked or main concerns, and it was put out in an email. Then each of us saw that, and then we can see like, oh, okay, yeah, I, I didn't think of that. Or, oh, that topic, I understood it, I didn't need it. Oh, but they needed this question or whatever. It's just, I feel that I get all my answers, questions answered. I always feel good about the meeting after I talked to Bill, but that's my conversation with Bill. It's not, I'm not getting the view of my colleagues, the other board members, of what their view, and they have other perspectives that I don't have or that I may have not thought of. So that's where I'm saying, it has nothing to do with study session, it just has to do with running our district and that we all have time for discussion and to hear each other. We don't get to hear each other or know what we're concerned about or not concerned about.
Right.
Because by the time we get to the meeting, it just all runs smoothly, and the public doesn't see that either. The public sees us just, we're, we're, we're voting on things and five, five, zero, great. Oh, wow, they all agree, they're the dream team, they just, so there's, there's, they don't need to hear the discussions, because that was, we already took care of our homework. We did our work, we did our homework, we front-loaded the meeting, we, we got everything done. Now we're just here to approve and take care of what we already discussed, which the public and our other board members don't have any privy to, because it was all one-on-one with Bill.
Well.
And that was a two-on-two with Bill.
But this is what I'm saying to you, John, that's why I keep saying the, the study said, the community does have need to hear about it. So either you're, and they, they're not sitting in on your one-on-ones with the superintendent, right? And so if there is discussion um that would be, and, and maybe this is how you talk, ask, have you posed this to your board president to say, or, or other board members, do, does everyone else have a um feel that this is important for what's good for the team? I mean, have you had any discussion about that with, with other board members?
No, but I always check with the superintendent, were there things brought up by other trustees that I may not have asked? So I want to know if there was some concerns or things that maybe, and he's always really good about that. So I try to take, I try to check and balance that myself.
Yes.
Since, since I don't get to hear the conversations, I ask him that question I just said, and then I feel more comfortable. Okay, maybe Dr. Young was really concerned about Rowley Wood, because she wants to go have a Little League game there in the future, she doesn't want to sell that property. I'm just, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If, if there was something really big on a discussion or something, the superintendent will let us know. But I still feel, I'm just talking in general, this is all theory, and it's all great theory. But far as talking one-on-one with our peers, because of the constraints of the Brown Act and our constraints, how we have to operate, we don't get to have, I would love to call and say, oh, what did you think about this? But I can't.
Well, it is not about a decision, uh, you can, you can talk to each other. There's no violating, you, you can talk to each other, John. Um, you're not trying to convince them to vote a certain way. You can talk about uh getting to understand some background. If you do your research together, um, I know the, the, the parameters in which the Open Meetings Act that you can't violate, you're not trying to get with anyone to get them to vote the same way you are. But board members can talk to each other. Um, and so you guys just have to figure out that what's the best way that if everyone feels as important to understand, or if you're gonna put the onus on your superintendent, to log what everyone is saying and then share a document with everybody. I'm just saying, so Christie, um.
Oh, I had another part, though, I wasn't, I told you, I had a few.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry, go ahead.
Um, and I think, and I don't want to give more work to Bill, because that's why I just ask him, were there other concerns? I don't think he needs, that would just be too much to write down.
I just threw that in there, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm not asking him to do more work, because I know he's already has enough on his plate. I'm not, I want to make it clear, I'm not asking that.
Okay.
I just, I've taken care of that my own by checking in with him.
You have, yeah.
Yeah, the other trustees brought up things I have not that I should be aware of. So that's how I take care of that problem, and it's one of the last things I ask before we hang up together. Um, my other item I wanted to talk about is, Deborah, you said the should word. And when you said should, uh, that takes me to distractions of coherence and unity, which there's a list of them on page ninety-five. So a lot of the things I heard you say were should do this, board members should do this, you should do this. So when I heard those should words, you gave me some red flags, and I was like, ooh, she's talking about the distractions to coherence and unity.
We're gonna get into that.
Okay, but those all relate to what you're asking, how can we have this all together? We can't just, 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 when you were mentioning some of the things you were applying to the other trustees, those were things that were mentioned in that list of the distractions. So if we're gonna get into it later, great, but then I also loved on one fourteen, one fifteen, how another school district have a whole list of things for me, for guidelines.
For guidelines.
Spelled out. So, and I know that you can use other models, so that's, I, I just wanted to talk about that should word that I heard you say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely, I appreciate that. Yes, and we are actually going to do a, yes, we're going to dive into that. Uh, Christie.
Okay, I, I, I wanted to just say, I kind of went ahead in the book. And, and the, the one um chapter on governance tools, it talks about discussion meetings, which I think would answer a lot of John's questions, and I think that that's something that we should talk about in, in having discussion meetings and particularly, and, and I know I'm jumping ahead now, uh, but, and particularly um when we have the strategic planning sessions in place, and we're visiting or, you know, one, maybe one member is going to the meeting or two members are going to the meeting or whatever, and the whole group needs to know about that, that to me would be a perfect opportunity to have the discussion meetings. Um, so that's a whole other topic. But as far as, you know, sometimes it probably would be helpful um during the board meetings, if we pulled specific items and had a discussion around just those items. And we've done that in the past. So um if there's something that is, that maybe everybody had a lot of questions on, I think that we've pulled some of those items just to clarify, um, clarify what the facts are. Um, but, but I, I too would, the, the Brown Act is very frustrating at times, because we don't really take the opportunity to have uh real good discussions about. Because we don't really take the opportunity to have, uh, real good discussions about certain areas. Not necess, not, not just anything decision-making, but I mean, one, for me, one real good discussion item would be just the. Attendance or the declining attendance. We've never really had a real robust discussion about that.
And why don't you schedule a robust discussion about that? And that's, why don't you, why don't you?
We, but, well, I don't know that we really thought we could. This is the first, when I was reading this, as far as like the discussion meetings that, that we could have discussion meetings. And they're not like the, they're not like the, the study sessions. I mean, they're really just for the board and the superintendent to discuss specific items or whatever.
And as long as they're open, you're not violating. I mean, because I know exactly, because they mentioned retreats, discussion meetings. Um, yes, creating the time to be able to.
Right.
In-depth discussion, as long as you're, you're, it's open to the public.
Right.
So they're baking here and you're not making decisions, you can do that. That, but you guys have to speak up again and say, if once you see the agenda. Um, and, and engage with your board president and, and say that this is what you're, what the, um, that you're agreeing that. We need to have more discussion just on this item. As long as, if, if you have the time and it is not time-sensitive, absolutely, absolutely.
I, I think that the more, the more we read and get to know what our jobs are. Um, the more, the more informed we are as to what we really can do. And, and, you know, just reading this book, we can do a heck of a lot more than we've been doing. So, I mean, that to me is a, it's a win-win.
Yeah. So. And you're right about the discussion. I mean, that, that is, um, absolutely. I, I have that so much is highlighted in that book, Chris, in that chapter alone, Chris, you know, what board members can do. Uh, but you just, just again, as long as the board is together as a body, it has to be open. And you can have discussions on, on the item that you could, they're your meetings.
Right.
They're your meetings.
Right.
Um. Superintendent or Dr. Uvaldi, whichever, yeah, actually, um, superintendent's following. Or Dr. Uvaldi, where'd you go? John moved around on my.
I think, I think there's the solution to, to what trustees Fox and Gardner are talking about are in, in the agendas that we have. And you'll remember from the summer, we changed what I thought was a very confusing agenda to one that is more streamlined. But I think maybe we need to do a better job of exercising that agenda and that structure. Because it, a lot of what you're speaking to are available in that agenda. For example, um, so we have a lot of our items of our consent items, you know? And as we move towards strategic planning, where I believe we will have more discussion. And more, and, and kind of deeper conversations in future board meeting. But a lot of what we've been dealing with has been business. And so in most of those cases, the, the business is fairly routine. The business is, is fairly familiar to the board members. They've seen, for example, contracts come up before. And so those, those are well-placed in a consent agenda, i- i- in a consent calendar. Where those can be dealt with, um, in a streamlined, smooth, simple manner. They can be pulled if necessary. I prefer that they don't be. Because if there's a need for a larger discussion, I, I think that becomes an action item. But I would want the staff members who are going to speak to it or, or present on it. To have the time to know that that's coming and to be, uh, ready for it. But they can't, items that need, require more questions can be pulled and made action items. One of the things that, that trustee Fox refers to is that there are these conversations that occur ahead of time where questions are answered. And we do streamline the process in that a lot of the kind of the, you know, hey, what's this contractor? Oh, is that the thing that we paid for last year, blah, blah, blah? Those questions can be asked ahead of time and they are. And that's why I have, I hold and always have with my school boards have always held, you know, one-to-one meetings ahead of time. So those things can be clarified and we can be more efficient with our time. But there are items that, that require a deeper conversation or more presentation. Or ex, you know, really expert presentation from staff. So those become a couple of different things. Some of those might be action items. Where it's like, yes, we're going to act on this. I don't, you know, we may or may not approve it as a board. But we need to spend some time interacting with each other and interacting with our staff. That's where we place those as an action item. And so that's where, you know, when we're doing the agenda development, Dr. Balls, Uvaldi, trustee Gross and myself. That's where we can probably exercise that, that agenda to, to meet the needs of the full board a little bit better. And, and maybe we're having more action items. There's some items that become, uh, discussion items or become informational items. That they're not really necessarily going to lead to an action that night. But where we are able to have a conversation again, deeper conversation with the board. Or conversation with staff where the board is better informed on a topic. There have been a number of those where we'll bring you something or I'll say, look, I'm not looking for an action tonight. But I'm going to bring you some information and then I'm, I, you know, I want to hear from you. And then you, you can help guide our work or guide our next steps or lead to an action item. We've had a few of those.
Okay.
But again, we can probably do more of those based on what I'm hearing. The other thing that we do, and, and we do a lot actually of special board meetings that are workshops. That can be those discussion, uh, tho- those discussion items. We do a lot more than I think people think about. We're, we're up to about, on average, since I've been here, four board meetings a month. Um, I've never met with a board as much as I meet with this board. And I'm not saying that there's a problem with that, but I, I do want to give us credit as a government.
Absolutely.
That we spend a lot of time on certain topics. We've spent a lot of time on the budget. Um, and actually I've been more surprised, maybe it's the job that Rosa does in presenting on that. I've been surprised that there aren't more questions in the budget. Um, we usually get through those pretty quickly and I'm like, wow, are there more questions? Nope, nope. And I think a lot of it goes through, you know, the, 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 the quality and the thoroughness of presentation. But what I would, what I would say to, to trustees, you know, Gardner and Fox, anyone else who has these questions or concerns. I think it's good that we meet ahead of time. I think it's good that we have a, a good, solid consent agenda. But there is a place for the very things that you're talking about. Some of those are in presentation information, that's on the agenda. Some of those are in action items. Let's have a conversation before we vote on something that's available too. And some of those are in those special board meetings we hold that are topical. Um, so if there's a, a need to say, hey, we've had special meetings on strategic planning. We've had special meetings on, um, you know, on budget. Can we have a special meeting on, on declining enrollment? Absolutely, absolutely. Just, you just have to request it. The other thing that I would say too, sorry, I'm going on for a long timer. Um, is that a lot of times, you know, kind of going back to what trustee Fox is saying. I'm always hearing from my board members. I'm always hearing from, and I'm always listening to the topics. Or even when we get to a topic and, and we start moving into other kinds of topics around it. And I'm hearing people jump in wanting to know more or wanting to say more. A lot of times what I will do is I will schedule that as a standalone topic. Perfect example, we had a conversation on Esser a couple of board meetings ago. And, and it started to morph into a conversation some board members were bringing up. That I could tell they want to know more about our assessment system. They want to know more about how we're assessing our assessment system. They want to know more about what we're doing to assess our kids and how that's driving instruction. I heard that from our board members. So I met with staff, we're going to schedule a presentation, information session. On our assessment system at the November twentieth board meeting. I want to give them the time to prepare for it, but it's going to take up the conversation. That was, that was started in a board meeting a couple of weeks ago. Where I could, where I knew hearing from my board members, they weren't getting enough information. So it's a combination of the conversations we're having. What we're actually doing at our board meetings. Sometimes that we're having special workshops on topics that people are more concerned about, like budget. And when I hear from board members where it's telling me, the conversation is telling me, hmm. Our board members need to hear more and need to engage more deeply on this topic. I schedule it and we do that. And the other thing I would say too is that like trustee Fox brought up the issue about, you know, Rollingwood as an example. Remember too, that we have a lot of conversations in closed session. We can only have certain kinds of conversations. The Brown Act only allows us a limited number. But where it's appropriate to have those conversations, say on property. We've had those conversations and, and we've had in some cases around negotiation of the use of our property. Multiple conversations, multiple long conversations on, on some of these topics. So I, I would argue that there has been that opportunity where it's been legal, where it's been permissible under the Brown Act. To have conversations where the board does engage and does have a conversation, goes back and forth. And I would point to some of our property conversations we've had. Where we've had multiple conversations, where multiple perspectives have been heard. It's been, it, it's been back and forth and we've even brought our attorney back for second and third meetings on those conversations. Make sure we get it right. Um, so, so I would say it, it probably, because it's been smooth. Feels like maybe, you know, there's, maybe there's more to do and there probably is some more to do. But I, I would say that there have been some really important conversations that have been, have been had both in workshops. Information items, some action items and some Brown Act, some closed session, Brown Act allowable items. Where this board has interacted a lot, um, in ways they can. But, but I, I would, I would definitely echo, I think, the frustrations that trustees Fox and Gardner both have. And I think other, others would say this too, that the Brown Act does make. Um, does really in some ways, I think, make these very clunky conversations. And they probably don't feel as natural, but, um, exercise, exercise our agenda. Um, if there's something you want to talk about or you, you think is really important. I mean, keep in mind that, that when you're assigning this to us, you're assigning staff to stop what they're doing and build something for you. So, so, I mean, let's make it things that are going to be of broad interest to the whole board. But, you know, a conversation about declining enrollment, for example, conversation about assessment, conversation about that. You know, there's that part at the end of the meeting that says future board agenda items. If you say, you know, I've been hearing us talk about these things that we really haven't addressed. Or we'd like more information on, um, bring it up, bring it up. And we will build that into a future meeting. So we're, so we're getting to that. So the board does have that opportunity to, um, to converse and go deeper.
Right.
You know, and, and I think, I think we'll see a lot more of that when we get a developed strategic plan that becomes something we address each time.
And so I thank you for making that clarity because all there are, I, and saying all of it, there are opportunities for the board to engage in these conversations. For each other to hear, uh, because again, yes, the Brown Act restricts you, but it is that, that, those are the game, the rules you have to abide by. And so create your agenda where there's opportunities like you mentioned. And it may just be a gentle reminder when you guys are in your meeting with, um, with the president and the superintendent. Remind board members like this is an opportunity, this is a space where we can have these conversations. So you're, you're absolutely right. Yes, Mr. Uval, uh, Dr. Uvaldi, go ahead, please.
Uh, I think there was one, one time when, when I too needed some information. And I think I, I shared that with, with the superintendent. And, and I think he followed up on that on a Thursday rather than Friday note. And I was just so pleased because, because he really shared information that, that, that I needed personally. So, so I can be more informed. So that was an occasion. Do you remember that, Bill, when you wrote it on the Thursday? And, and I, I was very pleased to see that. And I, I noted that also when, when the, you, when, when, when I read it. Uh, that's, so that's one, uh, just a, a reflection. The other, the other, back to chapter fi- uh, five, uh, Deborah. Coherence is a shared depth of understanding that would guide our work. Now, the, 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 the other thing that's, that I think try to fit in with Bill at this point is, is the fact that. He, he is, he would be the missing link, wouldn't they be? To, for, to understand the full coherence, that Bill is actually is the link.
He's the link.
Yeah, to, to our, to our, um, uh, direction. Because, you know, with five of us, and I'm glad there are only five of us, uh, it could be seven, it could be eleven. Uh, uh, but, but he really is the link. And I think chapter five alluded to that, if I recall correctly.
Yes, thank you for bringing that out, yes.
And so, so the missing link that I think Christie and Bill, I, I mean, that John is talking about. Is really enabling our superintendent to have that greater participation in developing the link. To, to put us all together in a cohesive, coherent way.
Hmm, absolutely. And, and like also with, uh, Mr. Gross mentioned that, um, you know, curriculum instruction and management administration and governance. Helping that, that link, like you're saying, your superintendent, he uses, and I told him I was going to be quoting him, that superintendents teach up. They don't tell the board that he's teaching you about the educational piece. So this is how you are informed. So if he's, if he doesn't do that, then no, you won't know these things. So utilize, absolutely, he's the, that link for you, absolutely. Um, Ken, if you have, are you still there with me? Click through the next one. Okay, just what you, we were talking about coherence and I, I'm glad you had this, that deep discussion. Um, uh, uh, about, and if you remember in, in these area, when it talked about cultivating collaborative, um, of cultures. And, and the deep learning, we talked about deep learning. Our previous sessions is about doing your homework, getting that information. Uh, and then here again, securing the accountability, um, of, of, of the work that you're, you're doing, focusing on the direction. And so based on these areas, and I believe this is where I'm going to have you do an assignment as, as well. Um, wha- what are your, what are your thoughts? This is all about leadership. You know, the, the, understanding this framework of, of, um, coherence. These are the, the four dimensions that are so important to be able to be fun, you know, uh, effective in, in these areas. So what, what, what are you, what did you capture when the book is really sharing with you about these four areas? What, what did you pick up? And then we're going to go into, um, a quick assignment, I, before we take a break. Four areas. Um, Bill, go ahead.
Thanks. You, you know, I just want to say something to securing accountability and, and I have the benefit of, um.
You know what, Bill, before you do that, I want, Ken, can you pull up the Word document assignment number one? Um, because as you guys know, when you're talking, sometimes I want to make sure I capture, um, what you're saying. And I have these four areas and since you already volunteered to do one of them. Um, so as soon as Ken pulls up that, that, um, Word document is assignment number one. And then I'm going to pull my computer down a little bit so I could type. Cause I like to capture. Your, cause I'm always building documents for you. And then we're going to take a break, but this is really good discussion. It's all connected. And then, okay. Oh, I probably won't be able to type because I don't have, so I'm going to type it on a different document. Because I can't, um, oh, I tell you, technology, because I'm not going to ask you, Ken, to do that for me. So, you guys see, can you make that a little bit bigger? So on, on page eighty-seven to end to ninety-five, let's hold on. You guys see your page? Okay. And can you pull that all the way? Um, so superintendent, you were going to, to, uh, talk about, um, securing accountability. That's what you wanted to. So superintendent, you were going to, to, uh, talk about, um, securing accountability. That's what you wanted to, to.
Yeah, I just, just, just kind of some thoughts on that because I, I've been spending, you know, a pretty good deal of time the last few years, you know, around Michael Fulon and around his, you know, the, the coherence book that he wrote that preceded this book. And so he used that coherence framework.
Yep.
In a, in a, in another book to really kind of drive a lot of work that was being done at the time. He was working pretty closely with the state of California and, and, and so out of that, out of his work on coherence. Um, came the California Collaborative for Educational Excellence, CCE, who we work with. And, um, and other, other kinds of things like the, the mo- the dashboard model for, you know, for, um, kind of assessing school progress. And he was, he was very influential in that. But something that in fact I was, he was presenting to a group of superintendents that I was in even about two weeks ago. And something that I'm always reminded of on the securing accountability is how much the word and the concept of accountability has been misused or misunderstood. And, um, I've even had conversations with CCE about this. Because I think there was a period of time that they, the, the people who were running CCE misunderstood and misapplied. The notion of accountability. I'm happy to see that new leadership at CCE seems to grasp what his thinking was. Accountability is strongest when it's internal. Accountability is strongest is when the people within the system hold themselves and each other accountable. And so a lot of times we have models where somebody swoops in from somewhere else, from on high, from some exterior place and, and holds you accountable. But the accountability is going to be strongest when you own it. When you hold one another accountable, when you build networks within the organization. Or even outside the organization, but you find the people that you will be accountable to. And, and you have that accountability. And so I just, I just put it out there because I, I've been hearing this. I've been, I've been seeing this particular quadrant of those big four areas in the circle. And I've had a lot of conversations and a lot, and a lot of, a lot of, uh, passionate conversations with the CCE people in the last few months about, you guys need to understand what he's talking about. When he talks about accountability, it's not the way you're defining it.
Right.
Checklist, it's not you're coming in, you know, and standing in with the checklist. It, it's about you're engaging us and building our capacity to hold ourselves accountable. And to be better with accountability. And that's modeled, I'm, I'm trying to build up in our district. With the work that we're doing around the science of, of continuous improvement.
Oh, I love that. That, thank you for that. So Ken, just bring us all back on the page since I can't type on that. Cause I, I'm typing on my iPad and I'll, I'll share it with you guys. So let's just bring us all, um, yeah. And so any comments on, on that? Cause I just want to hit all four areas of what your thoughts are. Or what the superintendent shared, that was spot on. Any, anybody else pulled out anything different? Or in addition that you want to add? If not that area, what other area, um, would you like to share? This is, this is your coherence framework. What did you play?
I'll go ahead. I, I did, I wanted to get, and, and I, and thank you Bill for giving that. Because that whole word accountability, I've been kind of confused too, because everybody uses it for their own purpose. But I really, you know, I'm, I'm, I want to talk, go back to that focusing direction.
Okay, tell us more about that.
But, but that, you know, that's kind of, when, when I'm looking and, and, uh, like I say, I've, I've heard and seen Fulon, seen this, but really hadn't appreciated much as I have been lately. But, uh, when I'm looking at this focusing direction, that, I mean, I understand, I think in, in words what it is. But for a board, it's, it's real important for us to make sure. You, you know, what we can truly focus on. You, you know, and, and, and I, I did get, you know, I saw that it's dependent upon the other areas too. But I mean, the direction that a board, uh, go, it, it goes back to that whole, uh, whole moral imperative thing that, that, that has to be a unifying theme to, to, to have any kind of direction that, that's focused. So, so how do we, I guess, how do we make sure that we're there first?
Do you know?
Do I know? No, I'm asking you.
Colleagues, how do you know? It's about your team. How do you know? Cause it's the second time Mr. Gross mentioned it. I was hoping someone will, would react to it. Um, how, how will, how can you help your colleague out here? How do you make sure that you are there first?
Help me please.
You're the team. What was, what was the question?
In, in turn, you, we have, we have four areas of, of, of what Fulon says, that there's a cycle, I guess, a cycle of, of leadership. One being focusing direction. Now, I believe, and, and help me, you know, just help me now. I believe that, that as a group to, to have a, to have a primary direction. We, we have to first have a shared moral imperative among us as a board. So my, my, so I back up to that question is, do we all have a shared moral imperative, number one? And how do we know? Kind of one A, one B, I guess. And then number two is, can we move from a moral, from a, from a, a shared moral imperative to focusing on this particular way that we want to go? And that, and I, and I do get that a lot of the way is what Bill talks about, those pillars in the strategic plan. Because those are the things that we should as a group be in agreement with. So that, that's, and I say that it's all kind of up in the air. It's an up in the air statement.
Go ahead, Dr. Young.
Um, I feel that, you know, that's a question that needs to be addressed. Nobody has really asked the question, do we really as a board have a shared moral imperative? We know what we, what we, we go our, our direction of which one, which one we want to go. And that's a shared thing. Do we all have that in mind? Um, in answer to your question. It's, it's a question that should be asked verbally. So it can be communicated verbally. And I think also, here I go right back, the strategic plan will be the driving force. To show us which way we need to go. And then we need to ask the question, is this the direction that we want to go as a moral imperative? So yes, Tony, I agree with you. There is a question that needs to be asked and I don't know at this particular time. If all of us have that same, we, I put all of us a board in the same direction.
Right. And is there a hesitation to have that kind of direct conversation with each other?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Christie. Excuse me.
Excuse me, yes ma'am.
Okay. What's the hesitation?
What's the hesitation to state what your moral imperative is or what your direction is? Is that what you're saying? I mean, from my perspective, I think all of us are in this for student achievement. But then we have to define what is student achievement? And it looks different and that goes back to the whole equity thing. But it's, it, to me, it's all about students achieving.
Okay. And so when you, the board feels that they have to define student achievement. Why do you have, are you the education expert in this position? Has your superintendent been very clear with you of what, um, student achievement is? Because that's his job. That's what he does.
I think, I think there's a lot of clarity around student achievement. I, I just think.
Pushing you guys a little bit.
No, I know. I just think it looks different depending upon the student. And I think that that needs, from my perspective, that needs to be taken into consideration. And I truly believe we are taking that into consideration. I mean, the four pillars really that we've talked about for the strategic plan is taking that into consideration. When we look at the A through G kids and we look at the CTE kids and we hold them, you know, on a, on an equal basis, not one over the other. And I, in the past, all of education was only about the A through G kids. It, I, I was reading an article the other day that was talking about, we haven't focused, or listening, we haven't focused on, on really CTE programs since after World War Two. When we were trying to get the country back to work and we needed skills in specific areas and that happened at the high school. So it's, this is a good conversation. I mean, what? So that's kind of my two cents. I'll ask other questions.
But I, I still go back to, I still go back to this. And it's kind of, a kind of our, our major imperative, uh, moral imperative. Is students, like you said, student achievement, um, uh, curriculums kind of thing. Are all mechanical issues that that's what we hire Bill to do. We, 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 if, if we have a shared moral imperative. And we have a focused direction and we've done collaboration like we should have, and I don't think we have. Then, then we will set those, that, the goals that we are set based on our strategic plan. Are going to be the things that answer the question, what kind of student, what is student achievement? What is acceleration? What is, what is, what is the complete, a relative knowledge-based educational system? What are, that, that's what our goals will determine. We are not going to worry about changing the brakes on any of those. That Bill job, you can't change the brakes, you know, but, but we, but I don't know. I, I don't feel comfortable in knowing that we're at a place where we can focus our direction to be very specific in the goals we want to make, to set those pillars in the ground. Because we kind of changed the culture, but to set those pillars in the ground. To, to be the goals for this district right here on Infinitum. And that's, that's it for me.
Right on. It's just getting this conversation going, that's all. So important.
I, I, they've got their hands up. I'll, I'll, I'll put my hand up.
More answers. And then we're going to take a quick break and we'll come back to this. We're moving along. This is what I expected to happen and I need it to happen. Uh, go ahead, um. Dr. Young, I see you waving your hand.
There she is in the third row.
Thank you for that. Um, uh, because we've seen, um, things in the district for the last thirty-five, forty years. And I agree 100% about your, your vision and what you, what we need to be focused on. We've seen, uh, test after test after test, but yet we haven't seen any results. That's going to affect the kids that, um, we're trying to, um, deal with. Um, and that's our, our Afro-American and Hispanic children. They continue to test below, uh, grade level and it doesn't seem like they are getting any kind of, um, getting any, any, I don't know what's going on there. But that's been happening for how many years? I don't know. It's been happening ever since I've been in the educational system. We never see a good growth of that particular population of kids. And we need to revisit that, you know, um, I agree 100% Tony.
Right. If you don't see a growth and you're saying this, have you posed this question to your superintendent as a topic? Something that you want more information on and have, again, your goal is going to continue, go back to, what are your goals? What do you expect the superintendent to focus on? Has this been, um, uh, a goal or a mission or directive, whatever you want to call it? Present it to your superintendent? And if, if it hasn't been, why not?
I think superintendent's father has been very receptive to, to what, what we have, um, given him. And he is, was part, it's not like he is a visitor here. I mean, he is, he is, he, he grew his roots here at the very beginning of his career. So he's aware of all those things that have.
Right. But he's aware, has it been a specific request of the board to say, this is what you're interested in knowing more about?
I don't know whether he's aware, but he's aware of my specific request to.
You see where I'm going with this?
Request that I made the specific.
Exactly. But as a board as a whole, I'm just, all I'm doing is pushing you a little bit.
No, no, because we haven't had a conversation about the board. Is that where the bricks they want to go? So how do we know?
Okay, superintendent, can you help out here?
Well, you know, that, it, it kind of goes back to that, the comments that were shared before, my, my response on, you know, listening to the board and listening to various members and, and, you know, kind of hearing where the interests of the boards or board is taking us. So one, one methodology, one method of, of, you know, of determining student achievement is to kind of check progress. And so that's something that we have planned. When we're going to describe our, our assessment system that we're utilizing this year. At our next, at, at the, not the next November meeting, but the second November meeting. Cause I heard that coming from the board and said, yeah, this would be a great time to talk a little bit about how that works. I think some of that too will be defined through the strategic planning process. I mean, one of the things that we, 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 one of the things that, that is endemic in our strategic planning process is the use of both the traditional forms of data that our strategic planners call satellite data. You know, what does the dashboard say? What does the CASP say? What does your graduation rate say? What are the, you know, what, what are your, you know, your disciplinary rates, attendance rates? What do those all say about you? And so that's going to be surfaced. We get that, um, not as much lately because of COVID, but we get that through a dashboard process. But then there's going to be what, what our facilitators call street data. And street data is when we start reaching out and we start hearing about the experiences that our kids and our families have. Yet, you know, in, in, in coming to school, in being served or maybe sometimes not so well-served by us. And, and so I think a lot of that is going to get unearthed, um, as we go through the strategic planning process. So, so it, it, nobody has chiseled it for me into a stone and put it on my desk. But I'm aware that this board has strong interest in that and wants to, to pursue better outcomes for kids. And so I think as a process of strategic planning and some of the things we've undertaken. And some of the work we've done with California Collaborative for Excellence in Education, because they've, you know, they've put forward, you know, some, some, goals for us from the reporting that they've done. We're definitely moving that direction. I think the, the, the hard part will be making it cohesive, coherent. In a way that everybody can kind of grab onto. But I think going back to, to trustee Gross's question. I think, I think there are a couple of different things going on here. I think there's strategic planning and vision. And that's in one realm, but I think when I hear people talk about, um, when I hear people talk about that we need to have a, you know, a, a kind of a collective purpose. I think that's done a little bit differently than strategic planning. Cause I think that leads us to the conversations around norms and protocols and that kind of stuff. And I see that different than strategic planning. I see that as, how does the board work together? How does the board, you know, kind of advance and get behind a shared moral purpose? But then the vision comes differently. The vision is more than strategic plan. The minute it's like, okay, we're all together on these ways of dealing with one another. We're all together on the, the reasons that we're here. Now together, working through the strategic planning process, what are we going to do? And what are we going to commit to? But I see those as a little bit different. Does that make sense?
It does to me, you know, the board. Does that make sense to you? Yeah. And, and, and the key thing and, and, uh, is your strategic plan will house a lot of that. Mr. Gross, you, you keep circling back to it, which I'm glad you, you are, because number one, you see the importance of having that. And, and what your superintendent is saying, he knows what Dr. Young has really pushed out there, what she said. He knows what, that is the vehicle to make sure that it's being delivered. So it's not that the work isn't being done. So it's not that the work isn't being done now, trying to gather some data or, or looking at the landscape to see some areas of where we need to work. So all of that is happening. So Dr. Young and Mr. Yu, Dr. Uvalde, you two, and then we're going to take a break, okay? We can take a break.
It's not so much in putting it out there, that's one thing. But holding people up, securing accountability of what you put out there and make sure that you have the right tools to evaluate and then modify and adjust if it's not meeting what you want. That's important.
Right. And with that strategic plan, accountability is attached there. There, that, that has evolved through that. You're absolutely right. Not just saying, oh, these are all the things what you, to do. How are we going to measure the success? Because the reporting back, how do you know you accomplished it? What are the measurements for it? And then who's going to do what? That's usually in the strategic plan. So that means that person is, or this team is going to be held accountable. All, you're absolutely right. All of that, that's where it's housed in that strategic plan. But the thought of, the process of the superintendent and his staff, they are, that's the day-to-day work. So it's not that it's not happening, because they have to live, that's the space they're in every day. But as far as it being in a structured way where the board can pinpoint, your strategic plan is going to lay it out for you. Where you can monitor it, you will know what reporting out should happen based upon you looking at that strategic plan, which said at about ninety days out, this is where we should be. Well, how do you know? How will we know? You will know by asking superintendent, make sure that it's on the agenda to be reported out to us, because we need to know the progress. And if it's not working, do we need to pivot? That's how you start engaging in that conversation. Dr. Uvalde.
You. Unmute.
I have a personal question. Are you hearing this? Something going on? Yeah, okay. No one is reacting, so I thought I may be.
That's definitely typing. I will probably be typing. I, I'm trying to mute myself when I talk.
All right. Anyway, I, I'll bring this, the subject of my concern after we come back.
Okay. So we're going to take a fifteen-minute break. It is, what time is it with you guys? Almost eight o'clock here.
Five fifty-five, so it's seven fifty-five there.
Yes, five fifty-five with you guys. So at ten after.
Ten after. We'll have another break later, just in case you wanted to eat something. You said there's another break later.
Would you like to eat now? Tell me, would you like to extend it? Do you want to eat now? What? Oh. But yes, John, we'll have another break. Okay? All right. Mute your phone, mute, and then your, your, yeah, mute your mics.
What time are we coming back?
Ten after.
Six-ten, yeah.
Six-ten.
Deborah, are you still on?
I am.
Deborah, I have to tell you, tomorrow I'm going to be leaving a little bit earlier. My sister-in-law is having, having, we're having a little thing for her. She's a cancer patient.
Tony, 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 hold on.
Hold on.
Tony, hold on, because we're still live. Michael.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Michael, are you there?
Now we know all your business.
Michael, are you there? Michael. I think we're still live, well, I know we're still live.
Oh, okay.
So you could talk, but just be.
No, that's, that's all I wanted to say. That's really it. But I'll let you know tomorrow when I, when my exit is.
Yeah. Or just text me and let me know, so I know if, if, can you stay on the first hour or two?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have the same problem tomorrow too.
Okay. All right. Take your breaks.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Always.
Okay. Okay. All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, I'll play it off.
All right, bye. Kenneth?
Are we still live?
Yeah, you want me to turn it off? Are they done?
Well, we're talking, no, they're not done. We're talking, so we're going out live. I mean, it's up to you, they're all muted. That's because I'm talking to you, you wouldn't answer me. No. Oh, we can hang up now. We can hang up.
Okay. Okay, so I can do present now?
Yeah.
And then window? Or my screen?
You can do window, you can do window, try window first. Click on window.
Okay.
Does it show you any of your documents that are open? So you select the one that you want, you select it, and then you hit share. So that's what I'm saying. Remember now, Deborah, we're still live, so we're good, okay?
I know, we're good. We can still, but what I'm seeing now is a double on my screen. Can I, is, I can see. But see, that's not what I see. I see. Yeah, I see my screen is different.
But do you?
It will look different to me, okay. I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't see where it says present anymore.
Okay. If you go to the bottom and, and click on, yeah, right over, and the thing, it looks like the old screens that you used to pull down when you would, the icon? It looks like a, um, the old screen when you were showing video, you could pull it down. Go to the, see where the, the forty-eight percent is?
Oh, forty-eight percent.
At the bottom of your screen, the bottom right.
Bottom right.
Move, move left and the first icon there. Yeah.
That one?
Yes.
Oh, you guys can see what I'm doing? Okay.
Yeah. Because you're sharing your screen.
Okay. That's a, no, that's in-call messages, that's something else. Well.
I don't see that.
On the top of my docu, oh, okay. On the orange right now, there.
She got it. We, we're seeing your screen, Deborah.
I don't know what, where you guys are seeing this.
Okay, you see the orange border.
I see the orange, but, but, but it is, it is shaded out where I can't click on it.
Oh.
That's what I'm telling you guys. It's, it's a different presentation. I can't, I can see it, yeah, I can see the orange, but I can't do anything with it.
Okay, so go, let's go down to the bottom of your screen again. Okay? You see the forty-eight percent, right?
Forty-eight.
It's a plus sign, forty-eight percent, a plus sign, bottom right.
Wow. No.
You'd have to go over that to the side.
No. Stop presenting, that's all I can click on.
Hey, does it, when it says stop presenting at the bottom, do you see something that says ignore?
Yeah.
Click ignore. Because then your screen's going to brighten up.
And it did.
Say, it did?
Yes.
Now, at the bottom, do you see forty-eight percent? The bottom right corner, underneath the PowerPoint.
Yeah, very little, yeah.
Okay, go over to your left and you'll see a little thing, it has a dash in it, it's a box, it has a dash to your left. It's not that far. There's a dash, you see a dash, and then you see this little box right there.
Yeah, for presentation.
Yeah, click that, click that.
It's not doing anything. Okay, let me try at the top. No, because I know that's the presentation.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's not doing anything. I'm right here. It's not doing anything. It's a... I mean, before it had, it had allowed, let me see, you're presenting to everyone. Let me just stop presenting again and try something. Okay, so now I'm going to go into present. Now, my window. Maybe I should try my entire screen, I don't know.
You can do it.
No, that didn't work. Okay, now. Okay, I'm clicking on the PowerPoint and I'm going to say share. Can you guys see that?
Yeah, we see your mouse.
But I have two, now I have two, two of the same PowerPoints on. That's what I'm saying to you guys.
What do you mean?
Yeah, it's showing me my PowerPoint twice, yeah. But I just minimized one.
Well, go see what happens.
No, it sure did, and I don't know how to bring it back. Okay, right there.
No, you did, you just did it. You're great.
But I just don't understand why it's showing me.
That's because, remember, she's sharing her entire. There you go, yeah. There you go.
Right. But I can't see people, I can't see you guys. And I want to be able to see the board members, so.
Okay.
Yeah, now when I, let me see. Okay. Okay. No, someone's humming. No, it's, it's, I still have the same, I can see everyone now, but I can't, um... And maybe, can you guys see the screen, okay? You can.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, I could just, I'll just have a double screen.
I don't know when she has a double screen. Oh.
Yes, I have Microsoft there.
Oh.
Well, I can't hear with that right now. Please, and I want, you know, we'll, we'll schedule to do this ahead of time, because I, it makes me a little, I get a little frazzled. Because I do need to be able to share my Word document, so I have to make sure that that document is open, right?
Yes. You have to stop sharing, go back in and present, and then select that document.
Do you guys see this one? That's why, I mean, I still have like, I'm gonna just move it off to the side, because this is just...
You stop presenting. Do you want me to go ahead and run your PowerPoint for now?
Please, because this is making me too flustered right now.
Well, don't admit it on live TV.
I'm sorry.
She's just kidding, everybody.
I'm just kidding, I'm just getting a little flustered. Hi, everyone, welcome back.
Okay.
Okay, so. I'm, I'm actually moved my, um, my little typing thing right here, over, so you don't hear. So I just wanna capture, for the next fifteen minutes, just to capture the other areas, because I'm building a document for you, so I just needed your input. I think we said a lot about, um, the focusing direction. So, who else can, Christie, Dr. Uvaldi, or John, what about deepening learning, learning, or cultivating collaborative cultures? What do you have to say about that?
Let me, let me take the one with cultivating collaborative cultures.
Okay.
If I understand it. To, to, to really be even, think about moving in that direction, there's gotta be two things that's gotta be present. And that is trust and transparency. I don't think you can really talk about collaborative and develop that culture.
So why do you think the trust is so important?
It's important because, because you, you, you need to know if you're safe, one. And if, if, if it's okay to, to, to share your, your, your beliefs, and your, and to, to, to share your wisdom, your, and things like that. And but if you don't have the trust present, then I don't know how you can really be open to where you're really coming from, the depth of where you, where you're coming from and where you're going.
So how do you build, because we, you know, we toss around trust, like someone was talking about accountability. How do you build trust with, with four people? That you don't always agree with? How do you build trust?
Well, you, you, you have to, that's a good one.
I know.
You, you just, you just have to be upfront and, and, and test it out. And, and to see if, if you're, you're, your, your ideas or your beliefs are, are shared by, by, by your community. And if it isn't, then you may have to, to back off a bit and, and start moving in other directions.
And the key thing is, you said about your, your community, because you guys represent your community, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm talking about the board, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I'm glad you said that, though, because it's not about, you know, just how we feel personally. You're there to represent the community, and you have to feel that you are doing your due diligence based upon information gathering or whatever, that you're, you're doing it. So how do, you have to then take that and share it with your colleague to help you guys get to a yes, or get to a place of understanding, right?
Correct.
That's, that's building, so, do you ever, do you ever accomplish, like, oh, I'm at that trust level, we're there? Do you, do you ever get there all the way, or is it something you have to continue to work on?
I think you had to work on it. If you believe fully on the, your, your goal, and that is, uh, the, the kids, the students.
Yeah.
Yeah, you gotta keep, keep, keep at it. And we, we talked about, uh, what was the other, there's an other component that we're talking about, uh, learning and, and teaching. And all those things, but, but again, to me, to me, the, 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 the most significant aspect of collaborative, uh, creating that culture, collaborative culture, is really trusting and being transparent.
And how, how do you be transparent? With your colleagues?
You ask all these questions.
I know, I'm capturing, I'm capturing your thoughts. But we just say, I'm more transparent, but how do you share, share your, with your colleagues?
Being honest and having the integrity to, integrity to, 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 uh, to, to share, to share your, your, the depth of your, your being, in a sense. On how you believe we should be enabling and empowering our, our students and the staff. We keep talking about our, our, our students, but we also empower our staff.
Hmm.
And, uh...
Well, good, you passed the test, I kept on pushing.
I didn't realize, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna say anything anymore next time.
Yes, you are, yes, you are, you, you passed that. Who else wants to talk about cultivating collaborative cultures? John? Right, but I haven't heard from John on any of these yet. I need John's voice and Christie's voice on these.
Okay.
Then I'm gonna come back to you, Dr. Young.
Okay, um, to piggyback on the trust that you were just talking about, it's also the community's trust in us, that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing as elected officials. So I think that trust is huge, that the public relies on us, that they've given us, to be able, that they expect of us to do our job. But I also wanna read the quote on, not quote, but the, on ninety-four, the last thing about trust. "Trust is a lubrication that makes it possible for organizations to work. Trust implies accountability, predictability, and reliability. Trust is the glue that maintains organizational integrity." So, all those components need to be in place. Um, but I think it's also not just how we trust with each other here on the board, or our superintendent, and within the district, but I feel greatly is to trust also within our community on how we are doing our, um, our job. That we were elected to do.
Spot on. And, and you have to continue to show them that you are trustworthy, right, to be in this position, to represent them, right?
Correct, but then it always, I'm always trying to think top-down and from down to the top. And with students, we have to earn each of our students' trust, we have to earn their trust. Once we earn and establish trust with our students and their families, then we have a partnership that we work with, and then teachers can really strive and make a lot of gain with students. Any student, anyone on this board knows, if you don't have trust, and the student doesn't trust you as a teacher, as an educator, they're not gonna work for you, they're not gonna produce, and it's only gonna hurt themselves. So educators as a whole must gain and establish the trust, and it has to be, and students know. They know when they walk in a room and they're with a, a teacher. They can just feel it in their stomach, or feel it in their core. If you like them, you don't like them, you trust them, you don't trust them. Students know.
Absolutely.
All of you probably know exactly what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
But in the teachers that have that established, they're, they're making all kinds of strides on all different levels. Well, so that trust needs to be throughout the community and throughout the district at every level.
Right, thank you so much.
But then you will, if you do have that trust, with our teachers, we're gonna see better test scores in those classrooms, because the students are gonna wanna work. And if you have trust within your staff, staff members are going to want to collaborate, and they'll trust that you come in and maybe look at a lesson, or share a lesson, if they trust you. The same thing in the district office. When you trust your colleagues, you're going to share more with them, or open up, and maybe be vulnerable, and share ideas, well, have you tried this? I, I, I hear your presentation, but did you think about X, Y, and Z? And if you don't have trust, you're not gonna be vulnerable to say that, because they might think you're attacking them, when actually you're just giving, um, you know, feedback.
Feedback.
That's not constructive, it's, it's just trying to help people grow.
Hmm. Absolutely. And that, that's that culture. And, and, um, you know, like, of course, the research says, and then you know, as being a teacher, teachers don't lead the profession because of pay. It's because of the way people make them feel, it's that environment, is it, is it welcoming, is it a valuing environment? And so that's part of creating the right culture, that student, um, um, uh, teacher relationship, you're right. They, if kids want to be in school, chances are very high that they are going to produce, like you said. If they feel that no one cares about them, why would they utilize any energy? You're absolutely right on that one.
I think it goes another step further, too. Once you have trust, you're also gonna trust they're gonna make the right decisions, and like we're talking about equity. That if students or staff trust you, you are going to make sure there's equity in place that, that people can be successful, especially our students can be successful. Because if you don't have those in place, then how can they trust if you're not really gonna help them succeed? So right now, I'm doing conferences with twenty-nine third-grade parents, with all the parents. The parents need to trust me, but they also need to see that I'm gonna give their child what their child needs to be successful. I'm not giving the whole class the same thing.
Same thing, actually.
Because if I was doing that, I wouldn't be meeting their individual needs.
Individual needs.
So it goes deeper than trust, it's trusting not only you're gonna keep my child safe, you're gonna teach my child, but you're also going to make sure my child gets what they need to be successful. And there's the equity piece. And also goes to love. If they don't feel that you like them as individuals, Tony Gross and I have talked about this, a child knows if the teacher likes them, and that goes with trust and with equity. They're gonna tune right out.
Oh, yeah. And, and adults do that, too. If you are in a situation where you don't feel valued, what do we do? We retreat back, or we just leave the room, you know? Absolutely. Um, let's see, what happened, I have heard Kirk Christie, I haven't heard from you on these, these four, what say you? But yes, I did. Yes, I did, I followed it.
Piggyback on something, though, that John was talking about, you know, trust, and what also Dr. Uvaldi was talking about. You don't necessarily have to agree with someone all of the time to trust them. You know, they, they may, you may disagree with them on principle of certain things, or just opinions, but a lot of it is dependent upon their integrity, and their passion, and their, um, just their willingness to do what, what they believe is the right thing to do. So, so, so I think it, sometimes, there was one example in here that talked about politicians, you know, they have to trust the other side of the aisle at times, and find ways that you can agree, so that you can compromise for the good of all, for the good of everyone. So that's not compromising your integrity, it's basically, it's building trust with one another, that you're gonna do what you say, I'm gonna do what I say.
Your word.
Right, your word is it, is everything, really.
I love that you brought that up, Christie, because when I read the John McCain thing, and how even people with different political, um, who they, who they say they belong to, but they still would trust each other because they know that they have integrity, and that, yes, we have different viewpoints, but that's just a different view, but we're still gonna do our job and do what's required of us.
Right.
I love that part about John McCain on the top of page ninety-four. To come to integrity and doing your job. We can look at things differently, or through different lenses, but as long as we're doing what we need to, to get to the final, um, goal, or the final outcome, then we are working together.
And, and that's why it's so important when board members are building relationships with each other. Like you said, Christie, if you don't have to agree, um, but number one, you find the commonality that you're all there to do what's best for children.
Right.
And, and I'm going to reach out to you, um, because I do value, you are consistent, you have, you're an honorable person, you start looking at all of these things about an individual, and seeing how they, um, are they, do they understand what governance is, do they do, do they lead their package, do they do their due diligence? When you see people really doing the best that they can, even though you don't agree with them, you will be able to reach across the aisle, if you will. There, there are board members on, on, even as small of a board as, as compared to the thirteen-member boards, where there are just certain ones that they just do not ever even say hello to. You know? And, and how can, and, and they, you know, you say, how can they function, um, effectively? They don't, when, when you have those type of, um, relationships, or not lack of relationships, so absolutely, absolutely. Dr. Young, did you wanna add to this one, or do we wanna hit, um, we did focusing, any deepening learning? We kinda talked about that at another session, did you wanna add anything else, and then we'll go on? Um, you're muted. Can't hear you. Yeah, there you go.
Cultivating collaborative culture, collaborative is a key word in that, because if you're collaborating, you're listening. And, um, when you're listening, that means that you're, you're absorbing everything, everybody gives them, gives them a time to share their leadership, gives them a time to, um, focus in on exactly what's going on. And it also, you know, gives them the ability, collaboration is actually a driving force, um, to shifting any kind of behavior, because if they don't feel like they're being heard, no behavior is gonna change.
Yeah, I love that.
Cultivating that type of mindset, when you go into any kind of situation, you have to be able to monitor and guess according to what is given to you at that particular time. It might not be what you want, but you have to have open minds to what it is. Basically, you have to be, you have to be transparent if you're gonna develop, um, uh, collaboration in a culture. Have to be, say what you mean, and mean what you say, and you have to be consistent with that. So that's, that's what I feel, that particular piece of the one-fourth of a pie, it looks like a, looks like a potato pie, huh?
Watching, I'm hungry. Deborah, I do wanna say two words, two words in cultivating culture, you have to have respect, and you have to be truthful.
Oh, that's transparent.
Respect and truthfulness.
Yeah, and that goes a long ways, because again, no matter what the decision or the topic that you don't agree upon, if you have all these other characteristics about who you are, you will find that people will start, like you said, someone, that you have to listen more. Uh, because you have been, you're very consistent, you're, you're, you're kind, you're respectable, you're trustworthy, all those things. But we have a decision to make about something that I totally disagree with you. You can still have really good dialogue about that, so I hope you guys are really listening to what each of you are saying, because that impacts this team. You're saying what you need from each other. You know, so, so really, uh, take heed to that, you've really shared some really good information. Superintendent, did you wanna add anything else before we go on? I just wanted to capture some of this conversation. I know you started us out with the focusing direction.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
You're good.
How does one, Tony, I want to get back to you. How does one respect? And what was that respect and truthfulness? How do you do that with Governor Abbott? I mean, you know.
You're muted. You're muted, Mr. Gross.
The same way that Vaskin-Sellus, they gave that example, how he went across the aisle. You may philosophically be totally different than, have a different view than another person. But I think if you know that person's philosophies are their truths and then I think, and you have your own, if you can come to an area where you respect each other because you use your own truth as a dialogue that you use and nothing else. You know, you can have respect for them. You may totally disagree with them. Look. But, you know, there are some people who have different opinions who are still respectful people. And then, you know, we're talking about the others, but, but that's, you know, there are many people like that who are, hey, they just, they don't agree with what you agree with. But they're being very truthful and they respect your viewpoints.
Yeah, and so it's not about disliking you just because you don't agree with me. It's a matter of we, there's room in here for both of us. But I'm, I understand you, you know, I hear. And there may be times where you might say, you know what, that actually makes sense. But if you don't have all those other, again, those other ingredients there where you respect the person that, you know, that they have been very honest, they are a person of integrity. You know, if people don't have any of those things, you won't even, you can't even envision yourself being aligned with them at all. So, but as this team, you know, I don't think any of you, unless you guys, I can give you an Academy Award if you're faking this, but I wouldn't ever think that that type of undercurrent would be going on. It could be a matter of you just don't agree with a decision someone made. But as far as if someone doesn't show that they have integrity or that they are face or that they say one thing and do another, I would hope that you guys have a good enough relationship with each other that you would have a one-on-one conversation.
But how can you respect, how can you respect someone who impunes on people?
What was the question?
How can you respect someone who impunes on people? Good example. Abbott just decided that it's unlawful to be transgender.
And sometimes you take that information and just leave it where it is, you know? You don't, you don't have to engage with, because people, it's freedom of speech, freedom to feel whatever you want. But just because they spew it out there, you don't have to do anything with it. And that's one thing we have to remember. Don't climb on the table with everything someone puts out there. You don't have to own it. Let it, and after a while it'll dissipate. But the more energy you give it, guess what? It keeps on growing.
Respect doesn't come with the title. Just because he's a governor, that doesn't mean you're a respectable person. We had a president, excuse me, so, you know, it comes with their words. It comes with their words and their actions. That determines if I'm going to give a person respect or not, not necessarily their viewpoint.
Right. And again, what you guys continue to work at with each other is again, if you don't agree on certain things, have a conversation. And if you still walk away and don't agree, at least you've had a chance to listen. Listen for understanding, not listen to respond to someone. But get a clear understanding so that you know that they are serious about this and they're not wishy-washy, they're not on one side one week. And that they have a right to feel the way that they do. Where it can become a problem is when we allow what we personally believe in impact what's best for children. Because it's not that we're asking what's best for your child, right? You guys have to think about what's best for all of your scholars. What decision can we make that's going to impact all of our kids in the most positive way? And it's not the easiest thing to do. But we have to just remember that it can be just, this is what I would do with my children. Okay, that's another conversation. But let's talk about what's best for all of our students. Chrissy, I think you had your hand up.
No, I was just going to say that a lot of it, it just comes down to when you listen to a person, you're valuing what they have to say and people want to be valued.
There you go.
Even if you don't share their opinions, you can value their opinion as their opinion. And I have mine and would expect the same value back in return.
Right. And you guys are doing that with each other. Please include your superintendent in this as well. You may not agree on how he implements things, but guess what? That's his job.
Right.
And his job is not to have the board say, this is how to do it. His job is to do it and do it effectively because you guys gave him the directive to do it. And so that's that give and take like, I probably would have done a little bit different, but you are the superintendent. Did you consider this, this, this? If he says yes, 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 then you have to trust that he knows what he's talking about, right? And this is something that every board member has to work on in collaboration with their superintendent and vice versa with the superintendent and boards. If he puts forth a recommendation and you guys blow it out the water and you're like, whoa, I didn't see that coming, but I guess I have a better understanding and he doesn't hold that against you personally. He would probably think, oh, if they had to have this kind of dialogue, obviously I didn't do enough as far as giving them enough information. Maybe I didn't instruct my staff because I know, again, just like I always say, the board president needs to have his thumb on the pulse of what every board member needs. Oh, do know the superintendent is doing that too. He's like, I know when I tell my staff, I know what Dr. Uvaldi, I know what he wants to hear. I know what kind of, if Christie wants to have the numbers, crunching the numbers. And that's how you do to the best of your ability. Are there going to be times when you're still missing some information? Yeah, but you try to front load as much as possible, right? Well, good. Thank you for going through that progress. Again, I always try to, when we're having conversations, I like to capture what you're talking about. So it's always something to refer back on. Now, Ken, can you move this slide ahead? Let me see where I am. Okay, your assignment, okay, that was 45. That was, okay, keep going. Keep going. We're not taking a break again. So your assignment for 48 is, I need, Ken, if you could pull up the Word document for assignment number two. And team, this is, team, this is where you're going to roll up your sleeves and do some work for me, okay? For us, for the good of the team here. So when he pulls up document number two, it's on page 95 in your, in your book. Let me see which one. 95. Your workbook is actually, 48. On your workbook, on page 48, we're going to do an activity called Go to the Wall, a learning process. It is basically really focusing on these distractions and challenges to coherence that the boards that you may experience, right? And it will develop strategies to respond to them. And, yeah, if you can make that big. And so what we're going to do is go into a breakout session for a pretty good period of time. And so John, this is also where you could add toward the end another 10 minutes or so to get something to eat or as you're talking with your teammate. Oh, let's see. Oh, we don't need to see all of that. That's too much. That's where tomorrow to, I just need to see the first part. Because as you can see, I'm going to gather information from you because you, what you're going to do is go into a group and when he pulls, this is what I need. We're going to list, you're going to list your three key section titles. The section titles are those numbers. Like group one is number one, one, two, and three. And if you, let me just make sure I'm on the right one.
Number one, two, three.
You see in your book, well, losing my book, losing my place here. Let me pull this up. So you can follow me here.
We're looking in the workbook, right?
No, no, no. Right now, look in your, in your small book, on page 95. Right now, look there, okay?
Okay, I'm on 95.
Okay, so you see where it says distractions and challenges to coherence? Talking about that, right?
One, two, and three.
Yes, that's how, one, two, three.
So Tony, you and Tony G, I'm putting you two in a group together. How about that?
We're going to get along.
I know, but we're going to get along this time. And so you guys will have the distractions, one, two, and three.
Okay.
Chrissy and Latonya, you will have four, five, and six. And John and William will have seven, eight, and nine. Okay, so what I need you to do is to have really good discussions about all three of these. But you, I'm going to need someone to be the scribe because you have to capture this information. I really need you to be thoughtful in your response because what you're going to do is you're going to describe the implication. So whatever number one is, which is balancing individual core values and the board's unity of purpose. I need you to provide a description, summarize it, not just verbatim from the book. I need you to describe that implication. Keep it in mind, your district too. Describe that and then how might the board operate differently as a result of this new knowledge? Your new knowledge is what you read in the book. Okay, so I need you to describe it and then say, now, how are we going to operate differently based upon this information about balancing individual core values? Thinking about the board collective, how are we going to? And then same for every one of these, micromanagement or accountability. What is that? Describe it. And then how are you going to operate differently based upon this information? Because they're giving you some research-based ideas on how to address this, okay? Doctor Young, what's your question?
Can you break that down a little bit more?
The assignment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the assignment, each of your titles, yeah, there you go. Each of your titles, like for yours, having a single agenda, one program, and one purpose. In the short, in the small book, it gives you a summary of what that is. Okay, so that's the new knowledge. That's the new knowledge. And so based upon the new knowledge that you're reading from the book, how might the board operate differently as a result of it? So whatever you learn, you're going to be able to summarize that so your colleagues will, because I'm going to capture all of this information, so someone needs to type this up and send this to me. William.
You know, as I go through this, this is assuming that some of these are distractions currently. What if they're not?
What if they're not distracted? Well, as a governing body, you should, whether they're happening not now or not, you should know how to address them.
Okay, okay.
That's what I mean. So it doesn't mean that they have to, but I need you to talk about it through the lens of Valeo.
Okay.
Because again, these are all things, these are tools in your toolkit. So if it's not happening now, it's not if they're going to happen, it's when they happen. So to the best of your ability, if you don't have an example, but just based upon knowing governance and knowing issues that arise, how, what would you do? So that's just basically what it is. So this is the work that you, this is work for you now, all of the reading about coherence. Now we need to put it on paper. So in your group, you're going to be in your groups for like 45 minutes. And so really put some good time in. It could be 10 minutes on each subject and then you have some time to take a break. But at least put some good conversations in and someone scribe. So you can either type it in an email or if you want to write it now and type it later. Eventually, I need, I do need you to send that to me tonight because I need to do my homework so that I can deliver it to you tomorrow. Or if you get it to me by noon tomorrow, I'll put it that way, since we meet in the evening. So again, someone scribe, email it to me tonight or by noon tomorrow. But when we come back together, you're going to give a report out at a high level. Okay? But I need the real details so that I, because I'm creating a document for you to be able to refer back to. You guys look exhausted. This is the work. Are you clear?
Yeah, so we do basically A, B, and C, list the three key ideas, describe the implications, and how the board might operate differently on the three topics that each of us has.
That's it.
Okay, got it.
And then just assign one person to, you know, scribe.
Page 50 in the workbook on the wall kind of describes Christie that A, B, C. So you, so it's not page 48 and 49. It's page 50 has kind of the template that talks about ABCs. I don't know if that helps you.
Take notes here.
Yeah, you can take notes. 40, 48, 49 was just describing the what of it too. But yeah, that's extra page. Yeah. Pardon me?
Does page 50 help for the others?
Yeah, because you can summarize that. But the key thing is you have to get the information to me. You could jot your notes, absolutely, whatever you, this workbook is for you. And so you can do whatever, however you want to take your notes. So it is, seven, no, 6:50, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Ken, I need us to be in there until eight, I mean, I was trying to say my time, 6:30? No. My time, sorry.
You're giving it 40 minutes?
Forty minutes. 7:30 your time, because I forget, I had to look and see what time we actually started with, stop with it. So to be out at 7:30 and bring us back. I think you can give them as like a two-minute warning, but I need you guys to really look at the clock to make sure you're spending ample time on all three.
Gotcha.
Okay. Remember your assignments.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Google meets works a little different at Zoom.
Did you create a room for us?
Yes, the room is created. All I have to do is open the room when you're ready. But what I can do, I can send, I can set it up to end at 45 minutes and it'll automatically close.
That's fine.
That's good, okay.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, hold on. The fact is, I have to get tobacco bill. I haven't eaten and I don't have my medication. So I'm going to set this for 45 minutes. I'm going to hit okay. Can I stop presenting?
Yes.
When it opens the room, it's going to send you to your rooms. And by the time I get to my house, you'll be, I'll be back on to do your presentation. Are we ready?
Be careful, Dan.
All right, are we ready?
Yeah.
Be careful though, you're driving.
Okay.
Just accept it, yeah. There you go. Awesome. Thank you, Ken.
Hey, no problem. You sure you don't want, you're not going to check on them or anything? You're just going to let them go?
Yeah, am I able to?
You know, the only way you could do that would be I would have to be here and move you into the meeting.
You go home and eat. If you come back on, just text me when.
All right. The thing of it is, Google meets is a little limited because you know, in Zoom, you can assign the host.
I know. Don't worry about it. I think, let them be in their room. They have to do their assignment. Don't worry. You just come back in 45 minutes. Bring us back in 45 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.